We'll move on to the next item. And that is the annual auditor's report. Dr. Rubio, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm pleased to have Ben Levitt with us tonight with our accounting and auditing firm who helps make sure we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing and double checks and triple checks our accounting procedures and business processes. So, Mr. Levitt, thank you for being here. Good to see you.
Thank you. Happy to be here. I'll do my best with the microphone. I tend to step a little bit too far back, so I'll try to stay close. I'm gonna jump into the district audit report first, which is the thicker of the two, and then go into the bond report. But before I do that, I just wanna kinda give an overview of what we're looking at here. These documents are owned by management. These are management's financial statements. The portion where the audit comes in is to really opine on the fairness of the presentation of the financials as they're stated by management, and then to look at a variety of compliance procedures along the way, and ultimately to give that opinion and also to render any findings, if there are any findings, either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that result from our testing. Our testing occurs in two main seasons: interim, which is just around the corner, that happens around March-April timeframe, and our year-end testing after the district has closed, which is typically around October. And so, in this report, the larger of the two, we're looking at the district's financials. I'm gonna give a pretty quick overview, try not to put anyone to sleep, that is gonna summarize the main parts of the report and also our opinions and the finding section, and then open for any questions anyone may have on our procedures, anything in this report, or anything related to the audit. So just to start out with, as we flip that open past the table of contents, we go to page number one. That's our first opinion, and really the most significant of the three. The independent auditor's report is where we express our opinion on the fairness of the presentation of the financial statements. And on page two, this is the one thing I'm gonna read verbatim, 'cause it's the most important sentence as far as the audit is concerned, in that opinion paragraph right toward the top of the page on page two. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Emory Unified School District as of June 30, 2016, and the respective changes in financial position thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States." That is an unmodified opinion, the highest quality of opinion an auditor can render, and is to say, based on the results of our procedures, we believe these financial statements as presented to be accurate and fairly stated. So moving from that opinion, the next section, management's discussion and analysis, starting on page four, is gonna give some high-level analytical information, really focusing on the changes that occurred in the district's finances, comparing this year, this current fiscal year under audit ended June 30, 2016, to the prior year. For instance, on page seven, we can see in the statement of net position that the district has realized a positive change in net position, going from an ending net position balance of $4.14 million at the end of 2015 to $16.21 million at the end of June 30, 2016. And then on that next page, we see the year-over-year change broken down by activity, by revenues and expenses, getting us to that increase of $12.069 million year-over-year. Moving past the M-DNA, the management's discussion analysis, we get to the core financial statements, which start on page 11. And these are gonna show in detail the district's both government-wide and fund financial statements. Page 11, we're starting with the statement of net position or the balance sheet, if we're looking at a private company. And this is showing all of the government-wide activities. So in addition to our current assets and liabilities, we're also looking at long-term items, including a very large liability, the net pension liability, which came on just last year, and that came on nationwide, as districts across the country were required to change their financial presentation standards to bring on the statewide pension liabilities that they had never been required to before. So Emory is actually in a fairly unusually positive and sound position, in that despite that large net pension liability that was brought on, there's still a very solid total net position. There's a handful of districts, a large handful throughout the state, that are quite a bit in the red, given that net pension liability adjustment that happened last year. So that's a testament to district conservative financial practices, and, in my opinion, pretty sound fiscal management. Good thing to see. And then going on into the core financial statements, the statement of activities is going to take a look at revenues and expenditures in the current year, bringing us to that ending net position. The government funds, balance sheet, and changes in net position is going to show at a budgetary level. So almost everything that happens in the district is really focused on governmental funds, especially the general fund, which is the district's primary operating fund. The government-wide financials that are required for financial presentation that we looked at here, including long-term activities, are really only seen once a year at around this time, when the audit firm comes out and shows the compiled financials. The government funds are the basis that the district typically operates on. And so that's, especially the general fund, really a key spot in terms of district fiscal financial planning. Now moving past the core financial statements into the notes to the financials, which start on page 18, this is where the statements are giving a little bit more perspective and detail into each of those balances that are expressed in the core financials, starting with accounting policies, and then going into individual balances on page 30, where we start in with cash, and then we look at inter-fund transactions and other detailed balances, just to see, for instance, with capital assets on page 33, a lot of the underlying activity behind that loan number on the core financial statements. And then going past the notes to the financials, we get to the required supplementary and the supplementary information section. These are primarily schedules that are required by the state for presentation. They show a variety of different information. On page 53, the budgetary comparison schedule is looking at the general fund, broken out from the funds that are rolled into it in the governmental funds, financials, really looking at, on a purely budgetary level, just the general fund alone, comparing the budget to the actual. And then several other schedules that are looking at both other post-employment benefit and pension-related information. And then in supplementary information, starting on page 58, we look at additional schedules, the makeup of the board as of June 30, 2016, ADA, and schedule of instructional time, and several other schedules required by the state. And then going past the supplementary information section, we get to the remaining reports. On page 68, we have the report over internal control and compliance. And here, based upon the results of our procedures performed, our control testing, we note no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses during the current year. And as we'll see when we get into the finding sections, the two comments from the prior year have both been implemented in the current year. And finally, on page 70, the last of the auditor's reports in the financial statements, the report on state compliance. This is where we look at a variety of procedures applicable to the district. We can see on page 71, just that list of all of those procedures that are spelled out in the annual state audit guide that's put out by the state comptroller's office. And every procedure with a "yes" below procedures performed was applicable to the district in the current year ended June 30, 2016. Based upon the results of testing all those procedures, we have no exceptions in the current year under audit. And so when we get to the schedule of findings and question costs, the only comments that you'll see are relating to the prior year. There's two comments from the prior year. There was one comment related to expenditures, where we noted last year that 13 of 65 disbursements had not been properly encumbered in advance of the expenditure. That was something that, at that time, we discussed with district management. District management last year gave us a response that we found very satisfactory. And indeed, in the current year, upon testing expenditures extensively, and this is a comment that affected not just the district, but the bond report as well, we noted that comment is implemented, and that control that the district has put in place to be effective. And similarly, on the second comment from 2015, relating to short-term independent study, based on the results of our short-term independent study contract testing in the 2016 fiscal year, we noted no exceptions with independent study contracts, therefore, no question costs in the current year. And so with that, I wanna open for any questions on the district report, and then I'll jump into the bond as soon as you're ready.
Anyone have any questions?
May I just say one thing and ask a question? If that's okay. One is, I just wanna say thank you for your hard work.
Of course.
Appreciate that again, and I am happy to, just to share with everyone in the board, that, you know, we've got a long history, sometimes of times that we're up and we're down in terms of how things have gone. So I'm really happy to see that we're, I feel like, on stable ground, and we're doing pretty well financially compared to a few years back, so thank you. I have one question regarding page 11.
Of course.
Just wanna try to understand, I assume the capital assets showing $81,218,391, is that primarily because of the new facility? Is that how that gets calculated?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that capital assets, and we can actually look at that in greater detail on page... That's going to be... Page 33 is gonna break out the not-depreciated and the net of accumulated depreciation portion by asset category. So on page 33, the sum total of both the non-depreciable assets and the depreciable assets, we see is that $82,149,013. And a very significant portion of that relates to the current construction. We can see, just in the current year, quite a bit of assets coming on relating to the bond program.
Got it. And I see the additions there, $43,593,000. What are the deductions of the $72 million?
The $72 million is actually just a transfer.
Oh, I see.
It's kind of a misnomer as a deduction.
Okay.
That was in the construction-in-progress account.
I see.
And it's just shifting from that account into mostly, actually, all of it is shifting into the buildings' account.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to dovetail on Dr. Rubio's statement pertaining to the new construction or the new ECL. When this audit was done, was it assumed as a projection for value because the building wasn't occupied, it wasn't complete, or was it just assumptions made for that value to be rendered?
You know, the audit is recognizing in capital assets all those projects that were closed out. So based on the status of the ECL, if it had been closed out, it would show in the amount being deducted from construction in progress. If any portions were still in progress at that time, it would carry on. And since we see that as of June 30, 2016, construction in progress is zeroed out, the entirety of the ECL was factored into capital assets as of that point in time.
Okay, so the next audit, you'll see it'll still carry that same number, or appreciation, if there is appreciation, correct?
Exactly. So additional activity is going to further increase the value of capital assets.
Great. Just by the long viewer, or the viewer through the area, how do we compare to Oakland USD's financial environment?
You know, I wish I had their report in front of me. I would take a, I hate to guess, but I would take the guess that most large districts were more severely impacted by the change in accounting principle that happened last year, the new pension standards. So I would venture that they're in a less solid financial position. But I haven't, I haven't seen those numbers recently.
And what do, if I may ask a follow-up, why do you think our position is better than the rest? Is it because we just gained a very valuable asset in this building, or is it just our financial position before, or coming into this change, left us there?
Well, you're right to say that there's a lot that's going on in the government-wide financial statements. So just like it's showing a positive net position after the pension liabilities brought on, a big portion of that does relate to the facilities program, which, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, is kinda neither here nor there. I guess I would also point to the governmental funds, financials, as being solid. The district is meeting its reserve requirements, which is definitely something that we look at from the standpoint of fiscal solvency. So I guess it's kind of taking both sides of the picture into play, the governmental funds as well as the government-wide. You're absolutely right.
I might add, if I could, that in 2011, 2010, 2011, the central office of the school district had 14 people running the district. We have about eight now. So we also downsized, so we're trying to keep, we don't have a CBO officially, as we used to, we don't have a CTO, the chief technology officer, and we had to reduce positions. So in part, it was some hard decision-making that we had to go through. If that answers.
Anyone have any other questions? I do have one minor correction. Can you please put, spell my name correctly?
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Yes.
It's D-O-N-N. That's just a minor thing, but I saw it, I go, I gotta give you something for it.
It never happens, though, don't worry.
My apologies.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, I see that right there. Unacceptable. No, we'll get that right. I'll correct it. If it's all right with you, I'll correct it in the electronic version this year.
Perfect.
And then in the printed version going forward.
Okay.
My apologies. And then if that's all right, I'll just move on into the bond financial statements. So the bond report is actually two reports in one. It's a performance and a financial audit. So the financial audit, the financial statements, similar to the district report, are wholly owned by management, and we're simply compiling those and then opining on the fairness of the presentation. We're testing controls. The performance section of this statement is really where we drill into the expenditures, not just looking at controls over expenditures, but looking at expenditures from the perspective of the ballot language that the voters sought prior to authorizing the bond program to come into place and to create, through tax revenue, additional tax revenue, the opportunity for all these facilities to exist. So starting in that report, it's going to look pretty darn similar. We're going to start with a little bit of history of the program, and then a listing of the COC members, the Citizens Oversight Committee members, as of June 30, 2016. And then following that, on page three, we've got our independent auditor's report, which, similar to the district audit, is where we're opining on the fairness of the financial statements. And also similar to the district audit, in the opinion paragraph, we are expressing an unmodified opinion, that we believe management's financials as presented are fairly stated and can be relied upon. And so going from the opinion into the core financials on page five, we see the balance sheet of the bond fund. And this is breaking out just the bond fund as it relates to the proceeds of the issuances against the authorized funds from voters. This isn't rolling in other sources of money. It's breaking out those election bond funds. And we see, under assets, the cash and various accounts receivable that are in the bond fund at this time, as well as the payables. This is all as of June 30, 2016, bringing us down to our fund balance at that date. And then on page six, we've got the activity for that year, where we can see quite a bit more money being spent than being generated through revenues, which is exactly as we would expect in a bond program that's designed to spend down issuances against the bond election and construct facilities as a result. And then in the notes to the financial statements of the bond fund, similar to the district report, they're gonna give some additional detail over those balances that are broken out in the bond fund core financials. And then on page 14, in the other reports, similarly, we look at controls and compliance over the bond fund. The comment that we had last year with respect to Measure J was regarding expenditures, controls over expenditures. It was the same comment that we had in the district, where we noted that, at that time, back in 2015, not all expenditures were being properly encumbered prior to dispersment. And we note in the current year that that finding for both district and bond is cleared. And so we have no exception in the internal control report. And then in the report on performance, this is where we look at those expenditures a little bit more closely. The first couple pages, starting on page 16, are giving some history, some of the legal authority for the authorization as well as for the audit. And then on page 18, we get into the procedures performed. And this is where we discuss the detail that we looked at. So in the current year bond testing, we looked at $12.197 million worth of transactions, 28% of the total expenditures during the current year. And we also looked at the transactions, not just from the perspective of allowability, but also from the perspective of any salaries charged, that may be even small-dollar salaries, looking to make sure that that was all in line with the ballot language and fully allowable, in that it was directly related to the facilities program. And based upon the results of that enhanced testing, looking at the ballot language, looking at the requirements of Prop. 39 programs in the state of California, in our opinion, over the performance of the bond, we have no exception that we note. And so when we get to the findings and responses section, we see that the one comment from the prior year with respect to controls over expenditures has been implemented in the 2016 fiscal year. And so now I'll open for any questions you might have on the bond report.
Questions?
Thank you again. Would you mind mentioning what that control was?
Oh, yeah. Definitely. So on page 21, we've actually got, printed out in full, that comment from the prior year. That's one nice thing about audit reports, is you get that continuity by showing 100% of those comments. And in that, in that internal control issue that we're citing there in the prior year, it's really focusing on the procedure of what goes into a dispersment. So what we like to see, just to ensure that the district has good, solid fiscal control, centralized control over all disbursements that happen, is that all disbursements be approved in advance, documented in advance, prior to the obligation of funds to a vendor. So in the instance where we see an invoice that's dated before the purchase order or the approval documentation, we have the concern that there was kind of a breakdown in controls, that somehow an expenditure was able to slip through the district's control process, and someone was able to obligate funds to a vendor by having a vendor render goods or services without formal approval in place. Which, it's possible that that control could be broken, and there be no, you know, harmful consequence on the district. It could have been a perfectly valid expenditure. But the issue remains that something could have slipped through in that same way if it was not a valid expenditure. And in either event, since we're looking at the controls themselves, when we do this portion of our testing, that would be an exception. So in the prior year, while we found that none of the items that were exceptions related to expenditures were really unusual at all, or an issue to the district whatsoever, the control had been broken in those instances. So in the prior year bond testing, there were six of 40 instances noted where that control had kind of malfunctioned, and the process had broke down to where we did not see the approval documentation in advance of that obligation of funds to the vendor. And in the current year, based upon the results of the expenditure testing, we did not note that exception. Which was, frankly, really neat to see, because a lot of times, we'll have comments, and then we'll have the same or very similar comments the next year, and the next year, and the year after that. So in Emory, it seems like district management very much took the stance of listening to the perspective that we had, the concerns that we had in 2015, and worked to find a way to implement those going forward.
All right. Just, as a follow-up, I was gonna ask John, who should we thank for implementing those controls?
It's a team effort, really. You know, in a small district, sometimes we're, we don't have a lot of staff, and we'll be on the phone with a vendor, and we'll say, "Send it. Order done. We need it right away." And what the accounting firm noticed was like, while the invoices were legitimate, we weren't following a good internal control process. So between Dora, and myself, and Mary, and Harrell, and Lisa Tamerian, really the whole team, including the school sites, we, I feel like it was a team effort.
Thank you all.
Sure.
Any other questions?
One question on page six.
Okay.
So it shows the local revenues, which is, I believe, the bond. What is the other financing sources? If you could move about halfway down the page.
The other financing sources is gonna be an issuance, a current-year issuance. And so let me just flip in the notes to the financials to page 10, to note five, and you'll see at the bottom of that page, in the Measure J Bond Building Fund General Ovigation Notes, we've got, at the bottom of that schedule, the issuance that happened on December 2nd, 2015, for that $4.5 million. And then a little bit farther into the report, on page 13, we've got that Series E issuance broken out in detail.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions pertaining to the report. Just looking through that, I know that we went through the process, and this is dovetailing off of what Ms. Langdon said, as far as the bond that was issued on the $4.5 million. Is there a possibility, like we did with the refinance of previous bonds, retired bonds through other issuance, is there any possibility doing any appreciation, or refinancing of the capital appreciation bonds? Because right now, currently, we have $16.5 million issued, of the $70 million. Is there, in the future, that could we entertain that idea?
You know, it's always something to evaluate, because when it does come into play, there can be significant savings to taxpayers. I'm not sure it's a fairly detailed analysis, and not something that my firm would be able to render their specialists that conduct that analysis. But, yeah, it's something to keep in mind.
Because I remember the, we saved $170,000 by refinancing the last, or retiring, previous bond issue.
For the taxpayers.
Taxpayer.
Right, yes. And so we do occasionally have another company help us take a look at that and see if that's a possibility.
And this may, this question may actually tend to that item, but could future developer fees be used to pay down any current bonds? Is that...
I don't think so, because I think the developer fees are restricted for actual, for construction, actual work that has to be done. I can, we could check, but I don't think so.
Okay. And then how was the rapport within, forgive me for not being up to speed on the Citizens Oversight Committee, but how much rapport did you have between that committee and your office, or your execution?
So everything in this report is made available to that committee. This is entirely, you know, a document that would be made available to them.
Okay.
And just like, you know, any other aspect of the audit, any questions that anyone on the committee would have, similar to the board members, any questions that you would have throughout the process, you're always welcome to ask.
So in essence, they basically didn't provide you any information? You went just through our books, our basically, our accounting practices, to find out where we are at?
Correct, yeah. The audit has a very financial focus. So we really take quite a bit of Dora's time, in terms of going through the financial records, and really, for the bond fund in particular, looking at the bond information, performing sidewalks, interviews of staff and facilities, contractors that work with the district. So, yeah, primarily, it does kind of look a lot like a financial...
All right. And then finally, with all the construction activities, does this audit have, does this audit have any bearing on the Turner's contract? As far as the execution audit of their contract, or is it, this is secondary, because this is just dealing with the financial, and it's not dealing with the construction activities?
Primarily, we're focusing on, in the financial side, we're looking at controls over expenditures and controls over reporting. In the performance side, we're looking at expenditures against the ballot language.
Okay.
So when we look at an expenditure from both of those perspectives, you know, we consider a lot about the procedure of the expenditure, from the standpoint of that findings implementation, looking at, to see if all expenditures went through the proper channels, received the proper approvals prior to dispersment. And on the performance side, we really look to make sure, is this aligned with those projects that... projects that were outlined to voters, or is this something very different from what voters were buying into when they authorized these funds?
Okay. I think that's all I have as far as questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Just one more. Mr. Levitt.
Yeah.
I assume this is normal, but I'm just noticing on page 11, I may have asked you this last year, I'm sorry.
No.
When we look on page 11, I do notice in 2022, and, well, particularly 2022, suddenly these numbers get pretty large. Is that pretty typical, based on how bonds are set up? And then, at that point, is that when districts tend to look at refinancing or something?
It's typical based on that kind of bond. So that particular one is a capital appreciation bond. And the way that those are structured, they do really focus the core interest payments and principal payments toward the end of the life of the debt.
Hmm, okay.
Unlike a current interest bond where that's more evenly spread out over the term. And based on the assessed valuation of the area of the district, there's reasons for using one versus the other in the context of a program.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
But you're right, that's in, it's a very different vehicle than some of the other types of debt the district used, and the payment schedule looks quite a bit different as a result.
And I guess I have to ask about this one, and you may not, you may know this one, but I'm just curious too, as the values of properties continue hopefully to increase, does that help us with these issues or not really affect, does that only help us pull more bond money out and not really help us deal with what these payments become at that time?
Well, it's a very positive thing, because you've got a strong tax base that is all the more able to continue to make payments on existing debt while also enabling you to get closer and closer to reaching the full potential of your authorization. And so, for instance, out of the 95 million, that's the total sum that has been authorized by voters, not all districts are able to get to 100% of that amount, just depending on where the assessed valuation of the area is at. But if you have a strong assessed valuation, you have a very good chance of getting to 100% utilization of that money.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One question.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people here that didn't make...
Mr. Davis, could you...
You might have to come up, because the camera won't catch your question. I can translate that, you said the superintendent's wonderful, if you wanted to just leave it at that.
Yeah, no, I can count on you. For many people who are not familiar with accounting or accounting jargon, could you possibly put a letter grade on this report?
The one thing I've got to do is define some parameters for that letter grade, my rubric, if I'm going to grade the program. And what I'm looking for are two things. So I guess it would be two grades. In terms of financial presentation, an unmodified opinion is an A+. That's us saying that anyone, any district stakeholder can rely on this information as presented. And then the second part, which is really speaking to the community, to the taxpayer base, in terms of the performance audit, it would be the same grade, because we have no exceptions against the expenditures as they relate to the ballot language.
All right.
Good question.
All right. Any other questions? As it stands, we shall take public comment, which we did, and do we have a motion to accept this with a minor revision?
That's right.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Tamerian?
So I'm going to go back to the Robert's Rules and call roll correctly. So I'm going to start with our two student reps, because they get the first votes. And then I'm going to, thereafter, I will alphabetize the list with the president going Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Baal?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.